I'm sorry, I'm gonna go ahead and reconvene the April 20th Parker Town Council meeting at 7:06 PM. If if everyone would be so inclined to join me in the pledge of allegiance. And you can kind of see my flag is not really working real well there, but anyway. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Even if we do it virtually, it's still done and in a good way. Okay. Let's go ahead and get started. So first item on our agenda, we've already gone through that. Okay, I don't believe we have any special presentations that will be done virtually. So public comments, did we have any public comment that was submitted? If so, it would be emailed to all of council. This is for general public comment. Items that are currently not on our agenda, those those items will be emailed to all of council for review if there was any submitted. For those who are watching at home, if you have general public comment items, you can go to our website and submit those by 5:00 PM. On the day of our council meetings and while we're still in this virtual mode, those will all be distributed to council electronically. Alright, so we're gonna next up is reports, items and comments from mayor and council. We'll go through our normal. The normal roll call list, so we'll start with Josh Rivero.
Not much, Mr. Mayor, we had Cherry Creek Water Basin quality. Last Thursday, all went well. It was another virtual meeting similar to this size. We're getting the hang of it. It's it's. It's hard. I do not envy you trying to trying to be the chairman of a meeting. It's tough, but I'm getting the hang of it, and I think we were very productive and productive for some properties just south in the county, just south of the town. So some good stuff coming our way.
Excellent. Cheryl.
Yeah, I haven't had any meetings, but I have requested that we establish the first meeting of this year for the Greater Parker Foundation. And I'm waiting for notification of that date and time.
Okay, Jeff Toborg.
I have not had any meetings, but I just want to give a huge shout out to all of our town teams, to our town administrator, our town attorney. But especially those guys that are out there taking care of our trails. They're being overused right now, and I just appreciate how great they look right now. So thank you for everybody at the town for all you're doing during this time.
Okay, Renee.
So most of my meetings revolve around COVID. And I'm on the high needs task force for Douglas County. We've been meeting every Monday, Wednesday and Friday, but effective this week, we're gonna start meeting on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we're doing everything and the county is doing everything it possibly can to make sure. High needs individuals within our footprint are being taken care of appropriately.
Excellent. Debbie.
I've not had any meetings, and I would like to say that I really appreciate it. I've heard other comments at a social distance. Saying how great it was for PD doing the the birthday parades.
Absolutely.
That's a great thing.
John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my role at E470 as Finance Finance Committee Chair, I had a phone call with with the Audit Committee. We're about to roll out in our next public meeting, the Audit E470, looks like it has a clean audit coming. Also, in my chairmanship at Dr. Cog, we had our first virtual meeting. There was about 67 people on the phone call and doing a voice vote with about. Two thirds of those was was very interesting. You have to open up the open up the line and wait about three minutes for everybody to do I for yeses, so.
Oh, my gosh, that's that's out of control.
Yeah, so very, very interesting times, and thank you for all you do.
All right, excellent. So for me, my my schedules have been, I think I mentioned this to y'all last time, it's this interesting. Gamesmanship that is played at different levels of government that you get notice of a county meeting happening at 1:00. And then you get set for it, and then all of a sudden about three hours before that, you get noticed that. The mayor of Denver is gonna have a meeting at 1:30, so the 1:00 meeting then gets moved to 3:00. To not conflict with the mayor of Denver, and then all of a sudden you get noticed that the governor's office is gonna have a meeting at 3:30, so then the. Governor or the mayor of Denver's meeting gets moved, and then Trump sends something out. It's been this constant back and forth of of meetings at all different levels. I will share, as as you guys are aware, and as as I'm sure the people watching at home are aware. One of the biggest charges that I've been doing lately is the dissemination of just simply data. Of just providing data to our citizens on COVID-19, not interpretation, just data, and that's unfortunately what's kind of lacking out there. Everything you go to has some level of interpretation, some fairly significant. And it's not doesn't do anyone good to just, you know, to try to argue about what's the purpose behind that, but from a data standpoint. I've hit some roadblocks in getting specific data in relative in relationship to actual hospitalizations. The number that the CD PHE has been putting out since the beginning has been a rolling total, not a moment in time snapshot. But a rolling total, an aggregate of people who have been hospitalized with COVID-19. Well, I'm happy to say that not only from my request, but other mayor's requests and pressure from others. The state now is posting discharge data as well, so you can kind of back in and extrapolate what. What moment in time data looks like, and for instance, instead of the, you know, 1,500 or so people that. The aggregate total says has been in the hospital, there's actually moment in time wise about 800 people in the hospital. That's important to know because that's the basis of how we can judge how our medical system is being taxed. By COVID-19 and so on and so forth. So anyway, so that's in place now. Everyone's asking about the governor's orders and about what Parker can do. I've been on several calls with the governor today and with the press conference. There's gonna be some extrapolation and some details that needs to come from it, but it appears that the direction. That's going to be happening is that some of that discretion is going to be turned over to the local health agencies, so in our case Tri-County Health. On determining what is best for that path to reopening, where those benchmarks are, where what the next steps are for how much. Social distancing needs to take place. That's, you know, that's that's kind of where we're at on that. The good news is that the numbers in general for Douglas County. Are significantly lower than other areas in Colorado, and the good news is the numbers for Colorado in general are significantly lower than what was projected. But yet it's still something that we have to deal with because from the town of Parker's standpoint, we are subordinate to the county. And subordinate to to Tri-County Health and subordinate to the state of Colorado in terms of what we can and can't do. In terms of releasing and relaxing regulations to let people go back to work. Council, I'm sure you guys have been hit up as much as I am. I have almost almost, you know. 10 times an hour, do I receive a message from someone saying, when can I open my business back up, or when can I go do this, or when can I do that? I wish we had that kind of power, but we are preempted by several layers of government that we have to follow. So that's. That's kind of where we're at. That's kind of my update. All right, so next item on your agenda, council is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine, will be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asked to have something removed for further discussion. Ordinances that are on consent agenda are for introduction purposes and will not be removed. So in front of you right now, council, you have consent agenda items. Let's see here, 5A through 5E.
Mayor, move to approve. Go ahead, Josh, I'm sorry.
No, Mr. Dyak, please.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from John Dyak, and we have a second from Josh Rivero. Council, go ahead and unmute yourself, and I'll go down the roll call for you. Josh.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, next item on our agenda, our town administrators' report. For those of you watching, if any of you. Would like to find out tons and tons of wonderful, cool information about the town of Parker, just go to ParkerOnline.org and look for our town administrators' report. Michelle Kivela, who's in this group, just look for the blonde lady who's looking at you right now and smiling. She's our town administrator, and she's the one who puts together a wonderful report of snapshot of data for the town of Parker. So let's go ahead and move on to our next item.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yeah.
I just want to shout out to the the town administrator for putting this together. There's a lot of information in here about COVID. And how it affects our town and what we're doing in response to COVID. But most not most importantly, but I also want to give a shout out to Economic Development. On page eight of the town administrator. I thought that their report on what they're doing to help small business is very, very good. There's a lot of information there. It's 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 just an excellent town administrators' report overall. Obviously during a different time, and I think it's definitely worth a read if you guys have time to check it out. Please, please, please do. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Josh. Thank you very much. All right, so our first item is a public hearing. This is a this is number item number seven. This is a public hearing for F and K subdivision, most of Lot 2, Parker Animal Hospital used by special review. This item has been continued from a date of April 6, 2020. And Carolyn, you're gonna be the the ringleader here giving us the presentation. I do want to just go ahead and ahead of time before you get started. Ask for patience for everyone who's watching, and I know we've got, I think, seven attendees who are watching. I'll do my best about getting public comment when it comes time opened up for people to talk, but just be. Patient as I click through and figure everything out, and I'll probably have to ask a few questions, but before then, Cheryl, or I'm sorry, Carolyn, you're ready to roll.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This application is a request for approval of a use by special review to add a boarding kennel use to an existing veterinary clinic. Both the applicant and the owners of the property are in attendance this evening and are available to answer any questions you might have. Appropriate verification of required public notice has been provided by the applicant. Slide please. The property is located on the west side of Parker Road, south of Park Glen Way, at 10225 South Parker Road. Parker Animal Hospital is proposing to add an additional use to their existing animal hospital. Their new use will be a dog and cat boarding and daycare. Slide please. The property is located within the central commercial character area of the town. Due to its central location with access to Parker Road, Dransfeld Road and 20 Mile Road. Uses in this character area should include retail, services, offices, lodging, restaurants and entertainment. The jobs and economic vitality goals in the master plan include the encouragement and support of local businesses. These businesses provide an important mechanism for the expansion of needed infrastructure, physical amenities and other services. Based on this analysis, staff has determined that the request is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan. Slide please. Zoning for this parcel is planned development. An animal boarding and daycare facility within the PD zoning designation is allowed, but is subject to approval of a use by special review. Currently, the property is an existing animal hospital that was annexed and zoned in 2011. As a part of a larger annexation and zoning application. This proposal includes no additional structures, but will add fenced outdoor kennels and a new parking lot to serve the boarding facility. Surrounding land uses are industrial and commercial. Some exterior changes to the rear facades will be needed. A site plan amendment is under review. Slide please. The existing hospital takes place on the upper or main level of the current building with the client entry facing east towards Parker Road. That's the photo at the top of the page. The boarding and daycare facilities would be located on the lower level of the building, which is not currently being actively used. The entrance for this lower level would be on the west side of the building and hidden from view of Parker Road as it is located behind the building itself. Slide please. The new use require additional parking and renovations of the lower level existing space to properly house animals. The applicant is also proposing a few improvements to the front of the structure as a part of the site plan that is under review. Both the new parking lot and the outdoor exercise areas will be located on the western side of the building. Adjacent to light industrial and commercial uses. These adjacent uses include a commercial multi-tenant building. An equipment storage yard for a construction and design company and a U-Haul storage yard and car wash. The proposed use is compatible with these adjacent uses. On-site veterinarians will make Parker Animal Hospital's boarding and day play facility unique. Veterinarians will be on-site during the working hours as well as on-call for any potential emergencies that boarded animals may experience. This level of veterinary supervision is not currently found within a 10-mile radius of Parker Animal Hospital. Additionally, few locations in Parker will accept chronically ill or elderly animal patients for boarding. Slide please. The County of Parker Land Development Ordinance specifies nine criteria against which all use by special review requests must be evaluated. The intent of these criteria are to ensure that the proposed use will be consistent with the character of the surrounding area. And that potential impacts that are inconsistent with the surrounding area have been mitigated. Staff has evaluated these criteria and determined that all nine have been satisfied or will be satisfied with the recommended conditions. The five recommended conditions contained on the next slide are based on the evaluation of the nine criteria. But also with consideration of the comments from referral agencies. There were no comments resulting from the public notice process. Staff conditions identify the approved documents and require compliance with the applicant's operation manual and town permitting requirements. A condition also ensures compliance with the state licensure requirements. Slide please. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the master plan. It is compatible with the surrounding uses and meets or can meet the nine criteria required for a use by special review. Slide please. The application was unanimously recommended for approval at a public hearing before the Planning Commission on April 9, 2020. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the use by special review. To allow boarding of dogs and cats at the site of the existing Parker Animal Hospital, subject to the five conditions contained in staff's report. This completes staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Carolyn, thank you very much. I appreciate. Now, is this your first presentation to council in our new virtual? This is, isn't it?
Well, I did Planning Commission, so.
Okay, all right. Well, I want to say I want to say you did a good job. Thank you for adapting to all of us here. Council, before I turn. The mics on of the applicant, do you have any questions for Carolyn? Okay, looking across the screen, I see a bunch of heads shaking no. So I'm going to attempt to. Let's see here, we've got Julie Hayes, Joanne Bigby, Nikke Conley and Tim Cruiser.
Those are those are actually the property owners and representative for the applications.
Okay, so I'm going to go through and do my best to try to move you all to panelists so you can talk. So be patient with me here, people. Let's see here, promote to panelist. We've got Julie Hayes, promote to panelist. Joanne Bigby, promote to panelist. I see Tom Williams, John Fusa. And Bryce Matthews are still in the attendee list. They're just like spying in on us, so they don't. Go ahead and move us over to panelist list here. Now. From our from our applicants that are here, if either of you would like to add anything to this, go ahead. I'm going to go ahead and if you know how to. Raise your hand through. Through the meeting here, and I will turn on your mic otherwise. Let's see, Julie, all right, let's go ahead and unmute you. Julie, you get to go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much, Mayor. So my name is Julie Hayes, and I'm co-owner of Parker Animal Hospital, and I also co-own the land. Been a resident of Parker for over 15 years. Parker Animal Hospital was actually the original veterinary hospital in Douglas County. It's been around for 48 years, and in a couple of years, we'll actually be having our Jubilee celebration as a veterinary hospital here in Parker. So this project that we're hoping to do is going to be a great expansion in a way that we can really upgrade. And enhance the look of the practice, modernize it, bring it into the 21st century. And make it really stand out right there on Parker Road as you come into Parker. So we're we're hopeful and excited that it's gonna be a real upgrade to the area.
Okay, wonderful, Julie. Thank you very much. Let's see, Joanne, did you have anything else you wanted to add, or are you good to go?
I am good to go.
All right, and then let's see here, we've got, and I'm just awful with names, so is it Nikke or Nikke? Nikke, did you have a comment?
It's Nikki.
Nikki, thank you.
Nikki, no problem. No, actually, I don't believe anyone can say it any better than Julie did.
Okay, wonderful.
A lot of time and consideration into this project to make sure that it that it will benefit the town as a whole.
Wonderful, wonderful. Council, do you have any questions for the applicant? Josh, did you have a question? Go ahead.
So real quick, I was looking through. The Planning Commission report and reading through it, you identified the volume of 80 to 100 dogs. You identified the volume of one dog. Obviously, background volume of Parker Road plays heavily here. How many dogs do we expect to be in the kennels at any one time, in the back, in the open area, please?
Is this a question for staff?
That's a question member would like to answer.
Well, the applicant has is going to have 28 kennels total. They, if they had a couple of dogs from same client, they might double up. The maximum that they are stating is 39 dogs.
Okay, and that that could be 39 dogs in the backyard, or is that 39 dogs in the building?
Oh, no, that's in the building.
Okay, so how many dogs would affect the inside?
The play areas are gonna be limited to 15, 10 usually, but as many as 15.
That was what I was looking for. Outstanding. Thank you so much. And then if I could, a really quick comment, I think it goes to say, you know, goes to. Criteria one, nine, but most importantly, seven with pollution. I read through, and I truly just want to acknowledge and appreciate your. The means at which you're getting rid of the waste. I thought it was a lot of a lot of thought went into that. I thought that was a really good job. I myself use the same company because of the same reasons you guys are doing this. I think it's an outstanding job, and I thought I just really, truly appreciated what you guys. Thought about and and not just filling a dumpster full of dog poop. So thank you. Well done on that.
Okay, council, do you have any other questions? If you do, raise your hand. Jeff.
So this question is for the applicants, and anyone can jump in. What are your long-range plans for the site to bring it up to a more commercial-looking? Entity as opposed to, you know, you you're you're right next to the four-story, more traditionally commercial, then we go the the dog hospital, the feedlot, the rock lot, etc. What are your plans to bring it up to a more commercial-looking type building over time?
There's gonna be a lot of changes in this initial phase. We're gonna be doing a lot of improvements to the exterior, a lot of landscaping improvements. And the look of the building will change. Long term, it really just, we haven't thought beyond this expansion as of yet, and I shouldn't say expansion, this renovation. Eventually, we could see some expansion of the building. We could see some remodeling of the front of the building to kind of take away that that front awning that's on there. Bring up the look of it, but right now we've been focused mostly on this initial renovation phase to really bring the look up to. Even just looking more appropriate and looking more professional, to be perfectly honest. But long term, I mean, our goals are to continue to advance in terms of patient care and trying to present ourselves the best way possible to the community. So honestly, anything is on the board. We're we're kind of limited a little bit in space in terms of because of some of the sloping around our building. There is potential to expand the building to the north, but that is probably at least five years minimum down the road. This project, we need to kind of get everything stabilized. This project, we need to kind of get everything stabilized. There's going to be, once the kennel goes in and the new signage goes in, we anticipate a real influx of new clients for our practice. So there's going to be a lot of upgrading of interior facilities and capabilities of what we're going to be able to do. We're going to focus on that first. If we reach a point where we need more space, then there'll be additional exterior renovations. But for now, you know, there, there's, it's going to definitely be upgraded, but long-term plans, we just don't know for sure yet.
Great, thank you and thanks, thanks for making sure that you're looking, you know, five years in the future, what, what the Parker Road corridor is looking to look like. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Excellent, Council, any other questions for the applicant? Hey, I'm not seeing any there, so I'm going to click over to my attendees list and I still see Bryce, John, and Tom Williams. So even though I'm opening public comment at 7:32 PM, I'm not going to read my script on, on how public comment is different during these times of weirdness because we got no one here for public comment. So I'm going to go ahead and close public comment 7:32 PM. And Council, I would entertain further discussion or a motion from one of you, please. Cheryl, wait, we got discussion, Cheryl, you got to unmute yourself, there you go.
I just wanted to say that I'm really glad to see the renovations occurring on this project. As you said, it's been in business for a long time. And I think everything that you're doing will enhance, you know, current revisions and future revisions to the Parker Road corridor. So thank you.
Okay, we've got Renee Williams had her hand up and now it just went down, so I'm going to go ahead and move to Josh Rivero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great project. It's obviously a longtime Parker business with the Shats next door buying food there and taking our dogs. I think it's outstanding. I look forward to the future of this business. So with that, I move to approve the use by special review to allow the boarding and daycare of dogs and cats at the site of the existing Parker Animal Hospital, substitute the five conditions in the Planning Commission staff report.
I'll second that.
And we've got a motion from Josh and we have a second from Cheryl. Council, I'm going to go down the list like normal, like our new normal is now for your vote, so go ahead and unmute yourselves and then when I call on you, give you your vote. Josh?
Right.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Renee?
I.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Before y'all log off, I do want to say, thank you very much for doing this. You know, a lot of people don't know that what brought me to Colorado was my wife was actually an alternate at CSU for their vet school program. So that's what moved us to Colorado. We decided to have babies instead of her become a vet, but she worked at a vet clinic in Fort Collins who also offered onsite boarding for dogs and cats. They called it their cattery. I cannot express how great it is to have a veterinary component to dog boarding and cat boarding. And the fact that you guys are doing that is really, really good. It brings a level of quality. I mean, I could tell you countless stories and I'm sure you guys could too of how, you know, an animal went into distress while being boarded and having a veterinarian, even if it's just during business hours, having a veterinarian onsite is immensely important to those of us who treat our pets as our family members. So congratulations and look forward to you guys, to your expansion and the services you're providing our citizens. So thank you guys very much. All right. Next up on our agenda, let me get my glasses because I can't read in the dark and it's kind of dark over here, guys. Next item is item eight A, this is our ordinances. This is ordinance number 9.308 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cottonwood Metropolitan District concerning Track C and new fence construction and maintenance. Mr. Hudson, it is so good to see you online and not only that, I got to say, if I look around this room, you're the only one with a tie on and in this virtual environment. In fact, I'll bet you half the people on here have like pajama pants on and I bet you're in a full suit. So thank you for being here. Chris, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Next slide, please. This is a, an IGA regarding the wife, regarding the widening of Cottonwood Drive. Town originally constructed the initial two lanes of Cottonwood Drive over Cherry Creek in the mid 1980s with the long-term plans that this would be a four-lane roadway. Due to continued growth of the Parker, the northern Parker area, the traffic has increased to a point where the widening is needed and we're hoping to start construction later this year in the second half of 2020. Unlike what was built in the 1980s, the widening is going to require stormwater detention pond. And in addition, we also need a temporary construction easement so we can actually build a new road off the side of the new bridge. So more to come on that later on the presentation. And we have actually been discussing this project for several years with the Cottonwood Metropolitan District as they own properties adjacent to roadway. Next slide, please. The town currently has a trail easement at the Cottonwood Trailhead area. This easement has caused confusion as responsible for the amenities of the trailhead. It's really a bike trail easement that's over all of Cottonwood Track C and there's a lot of amenities at the trailhead that don't necessarily fall under the definition of a bike trail easement. Cottonwood Metro District has proposed to convey the entirety of Track C, Cottonwood filing eight to the town to eliminate these maintenance responsibility questions. And staff is in agreement on this conveyance to clean up these ownership and maintenance issues that exist out there. The conveyance would provide an area for the needed stormwater detention pond and also a staging area for the project construction. We need an area that the contractor can use, place forms and other things and the workers can actually park if they're going to be building this project. The majority of the, of Track C is about eight acres in size. The majority of it is the trailhead, but the eastern portion is flood plain. And in our agreement as well, we've told the Cottonwood Metro District, they can salvage what they want prior to conveyance. They've had some interest in some of the, the wooden fences that are out there. These are all going to get removed because of the improvements we're going to be doing. Next slide, please. This is a vicinity map showing you where Cottonwood filing eight, Track C is at. It's where the trailhead is, most people know that, but it also goes to the east down the Cherry Creek floodplain area. It doesn't go all the way to where Cherry Creek is today, but there's a lot of trees down in that eastern portion. Next slide, please. Talked a little bit earlier, but we also need to require a temporary construction easement so we can build the new bridge while minimizing the traffic to the, the impacts to traveling public. We want to, this is this easement is on the south side of the bridge, so the cranes and stuff that'll be needed to build a bridge can work from the south side and not impact the traffic on the existing bridge. As consideration of the temporary construction easement, the Cottonwood Metro District wants the town to replace existing privacy fences on the south side of Cottonwood Drive between Cherry Creek and Cottonwood Way. It's about 600 feet in length. There's a total of 10 property owners that are adjacent to this limit. And due to the poor condition of these fences that are out there, the widening works will be very close to this, may further deteriorate, knock down some of these fences. And we thought it would be a good consideration for this temporary construction easement. And it's a reasonable amount of valuation as well. The long-term maintenance, these fences will remain the responsibility of the adjacent property owner, and this is actually called out in the IGA. And we've agreed to complete the fences by the end of 21, so December 30th, 2021. Next slide, please. This is a vicinity map showing the, the location, the fence replacement there on the south side of Cottonwood Drive. Next slide, please. And this is a map actually showing the temporary construction easement areas. We need some smaller areas on the north side as well. We have to do a little bit of channel improvement on the north side, but we'll be able to access that from underneath the existing bridge. Next slide. And ordinance is required to approve this intergovernmental agreement. The Cottonwood Metro District Board verbally agreed to the terms of the IGA on March 25th and they are actually planning on, they have this on their agenda for two days from now on April 22nd to vote on it. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Awesome, thank you very much, Chris. Council, do you have any questions for Chris? I'm looking and I'm not seeing any movement on that. Okay, so it is a public hearing, so let me click over to attendees or actually it's an ordinance, but let me put, okay, so in attendees, we still only have Bryce, John Fusa, and Tom Williams. Do you think Tom should step up and do some public comment and ask some hard questions of you, Chris?
I, I think that'd be appropriate.
That'd be appropriate. I don't see anyone over there putting their hands up, so I'm going to assume there's no public comment. So we opened it at 7:41, closed public comment at 7:41. I'm going to come back and of course, Josh Rivero has his hand up for a question. So Josh, I'm going to unmute you and do it, dude.
Oh, there we go. So just real quick, you mentioned improvements to the, to the creek or to, to the waterway. Is that a project in cooperation with Mahai and Cherry Creek or is that something the town's taking on itself? Is it a big project? Can you talk a little bit more about the water?
It's a very small project, John, and the actual work in the floodway there, we're just kind of redirecting a little bit of the drainage away from one of the columns that's out there. It's very minor. We actually had to pull a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit for this project to get approvals. And the stormwater detention pond will take care of all the water quality considerations for the new roadway widening as well. So, but again, the work in Cherry Creek is very minor.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions for Chris, Council? It doesn't look like anyone's moving, so at that point, I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
Mayor, this is John Dyak. I move to approve ordinance number 9.308 on second reading.
Second.
Renee says second.
We have a motion from John and I'm going to go and give that second to Renee because she's been very patient all night long. So we've got a second from Renee. So Council, I'm going to go ahead and go ahead and unmute yourselves and I'm going to go through a roll call on this. Josh?
Right.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jeff?
I.
Renee?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. With no further business before Council, we will go ahead and adjourn at 7:43. Now, wait before you all jump off. I need to get some clarification from Jim Maloney because he's been sitting there not talking to us and, you know, we need to get some input from Jim and that's always good. Jim, do we need to just wait a few minutes and then jump back into our Parker Authority for Reinvestment Meeting still here on Zoom or do we need to do something different?
You can go right into your par meeting.
Okay, so everyone who is elected in this room, who's going to, who's on the par board, please stay. If anyone else wants to jump, you can jump. Raise your hand if you need to hit like the restroom or something like that, otherwise we'll get rolling. All right, I was looking at Josh Rivero, but he's not raising his hand, so he should be good. All right, so let's go ahead and move into our, I'm going to reconvene our Parker Authority for Reinvestment Meeting at 7:44 PM. All Authority Board members are present. Now, Jim, I know I jumped the gun earlier and we did a roll call and approval of minutes earlier. Do we need to redo it or are we good for that?
You'll need to start over from the beginning.
Okay, so let's go ahead and start over from the beginning. All Authority Board members are present. I'm calling this, I'm reconvening this meeting at 7:44 PM. Authority Board, first item on our agenda is approval of minutes. You have in front of you the minutes from February 18th, April 6th, and April 13th. So I would entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
So moved, Rivera.
Second, Dyak.
We have a motion by Josh and a second by John. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Josh?
Right.
Cheryl?
I.
Jeff?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is public comment and since we have zero attendees at this point, that would mean no public comments, so we're going to go ahead and move on to item number four, which is a written disclosure, Cottonwood Commercial Urban Renewal Area. Jim, you going to give us info on this? You got to unmute yourself there, big man. There you go.
Well, were you going to handle this or do you want me to handle it?
You can handle it since you told me there was no staff presentation. I don't really know what it is.
Hey, do you guys want me to handle it? I'll make some stuff up if you want me to handle it.
So enclosed in your packet is a letter from Commissioner Tobor disclosing a conflict associated with the Cottonwood Commercial Area Urban Renewal Plan. And under the state statute which controls, if there is a disclosure, that disclosure, which it gives the letter in your packet, is submitted to the authority. All you need to do is a, a motion to accept that letter and then that disclosure would be part of the records moving forward and made a part of the minutes of this meeting.
Excellent, so I would, without further discussion or with further, okay, Josh, you have a discussion, go ahead.
No, actually, I was just going to make the motion.
Okay, all right, Jeff, did you want to add anything to it before we go?
So since this is me recusing myself, do I vote on it or do I abstain or?
You would abstain from voting on this item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Josh?
Kudos to Mr. Commissioner Toborg on, on self, self disclosing. I appreciate that. I move to accept the written disclosure submitted by Commissioner Toborg to par and to enter into such disclosure upon the records of par as provided by state law.
Debbie, second.
We have a motion by Josh and dag gummit, we've got Debbie who figured out the technology and is.
I didn't raise my hand.
You really, that's what I'm saying, you're good girl. Debbie, Debbie is the second, so I'm going to go through a roll call vote. Josh?
Right.
Cheryl?
I.
Jeff has recused himself so, or abstain, I'm sorry, so is abstaining from this vote because it's about him. So we're going to go to Renee. We go to Debbie?
Yes.
Or go to John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before this Authority Board, I'm going to tell you all, go wash your hands and they say, y'all, we'll see you next time. We adjourn at 7:47 PM.